Let's get started. And we call the meeting to order. When you take our roll call here, so.
Greg Myrie.
Here.
Cindy Wright.
Here.
Del Meyer not here, Jonathan Glassman.
Here.
Kim Weeser.
Here.
Larry Dawson.
Here.
Okay, so everybody has the meeting minutes from our last meeting in May. Do we have any way of a motion to approve this?
I've got a correction.
Yes.
I'd like to make.
Yes.
Page three. Halfway down, this line begins, board initially agreed by their consent, but for the vote of six to one, I believe that's incorrect. I asked for a roll call vote because I felt that the voice vote was not cleared.
Okay.
So we can make that correction.
Yes, you're correct.
So you're saying that when you did vote, there was not a clear incentive?
Right, that was my understanding of the voice vote.
That's why we went into roll call.
Right.
Vote, just to make sure that everybody was heard correctly. Good change, good catch. Anything else noticeable on those minutes? Motion to approve, do we have a second? With that change?
Second.
Who was that? Jim, second that?
Greg made the motion.
Okay Amelia, and then we have that change, so motion and a second instead of okay with that, because you did make.
They made a motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, meeting minutes approved with that correction. Let's go into our first here, number nine, seven, six. This is the one who discussed it. Also, we have people present, if you want to join us at the, at the table here in the front. Yes, yes, please. Can we also find out who you are?
Yes, I am Tina Barch. My husband can't be here today, he's at work. His name is Scott.
And I'm Sally Mancick, I am her mother.
Okay.
And I am Dale Mancick.
Your names are all on here. Okay, should we start?
Yep, notice the public hearing, please take notice that an application has been made by Stacey Barch of the Division of Minnesota, 14889, 304, Minnesota, 55914 for a conditional use permit to have a dwelling in an agricultural district. Section fourteen, fourteen point three, conditional use of subdivision one, subsection ten, using the property on following premises, two way, part of southeast quarter to southeast quarter, lying south of Township Road, section twenty-one, township one oh four, range six, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel zero six, zero one, zero eight, zero zero one. Said applicants are standing and making application as key owner of said described lands. Hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioned Room, City of Calabonia, Minnesota, at five PM on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying a set application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Calabonia, Minnesota, five five nine two one, or emailed to martin@harrett.co.houston.mn.us. Must be received by Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Comments in regard to petition received by the state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Harretson Administration.
Okay. Speak to them. Other than what we have here, would like to speak with, with us as per your request.
Um, just, we recently moved back to the area, my husband retired from the Air Force after twenty years. We have been looking for home in the area for almost a year now, we kind of started before we moved back. And there hasn't really been anything up there. For us, we both grew up in Houston.
Right.
Went to school there, graduated from there, and our kids went there this year. And they're doing really well there, and so we would like to stay in this area. We both grew up in the country, my husband and I, and so that's kind of what we're hoping that we can looking for for our children too.
Okay.
And we initially went to Marty to see whether we could put, you know, a mobile home or another home on our property, and he was the one that suggested, no, you have this little parcel up here that you could get a conditional use for, and they were excited about that, and that's where we're at.
So this parcel is adjacent to your property?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, yeah, the boys can walk right down the hill to us.
How large is the parcel?
Um, anywhere between five and thirteen acres, it's, it's, it's a good.
Parcel that they're gonna build on, how large is that?
Um, five acres more or less, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's gonna be all new, new septic, everything.
Yes.
Well.
Yeah.
Well.
And we said square footage.
Thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen square feet.
Yeah.
Is that a separate forty?
Some open forty. What's the access going to be, is that can come through your place, or is it gonna go right up the hill? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's basically, that line is, so you could stay below twelve percent. So, and then that'll bring it over to theirs, and then it'll connect to theirs, so they're just gonna be the need for you, that'll get you a lot to.
Stops and everything, you're okay.
Let's want to follow that line.
John Beckman had the engineer, oh, on Monday, on behalf of the township.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Township's okay with it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we took him right up to the woods where we wanted to go, and he said, it looks like it's okay and stuff.
Okay with it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's some John on that one.
Any complaints, Martin?
Nope.
That's. Thank you again, Marty, for all this.
He's rocking roll, dude.
Okay, you wanna go over our findings? Anything else you want to add at this point? Thank you for all that overview, that's wonderful.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to let we skip numbers eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of the findings. As they are not applicable.
Okay. Second to approve, making those changes and skipping those, skipping through those findings, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move forward, have to move forward with the rest of the evaluation.
One, planning permission cannot recommend a condition use permit unless, unless they find the following. One, the proposed use conforms to the county land use, staff analysis. Single-family, non-farm dwellings are conditionally allowed in agricultural districts. This protects agricultural interests, which is a primary goal of comprehensive land use.
Okay, um, do we have a motion, second for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion.
With that one, second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
But two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis, the applicant indicates the dwelling is a single-family, non-farm dwelling. Housing is a needed use.
Okay, motion approved.
The rule.
Okay. Second?
A second.
All right.
I guess we can't even.
Okay, so we can just, yeah, okay, so, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Point two, carries.
Number three, that the proposed use will degrade the water quality of the county staff analysis. The new dwelling with proper erosion control and septic treatment will have minimal impact on the local water.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff, staff analysis. Measures, measures such as the erosion control plan will be in place for the construction of the new dwelling to minimize the water runoff.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use, staff analysis. Soil conditions will not be a concern other than locating a second observing area in an undisturbed location, soil conditions are adequate for the proposed use.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Approved, go ahead.
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that's the end of it. Staff analysis, there are no anticipated pollution hazards.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to seven.
That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, the owner will be responsible for all utilities on the parcel as it is a new site and the township will have, have to approve driveway access to Paradise Drive.
Okay, so we probably have that worked out, I'm assuming. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, moving on to ten.
That the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, the new dwelling will have a low profile new shed, the closest neighbor is located eight hundred and twenty feet away, which is a family member. The addition of a dwelling is not anticipated to negatively affect the use of neighboring properties.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to eleven.
That establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the predominant land use is agriculture, and the continuation of which will be minimally impacted by the new dwelling. The area continues to be primary agricultural, and the dwelling should not impact neighboring landowners' ability to utilize their properties for existing uses.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to twelve, thank you. No. Twelve, okay, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
That site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare, staff analysis. Public health, safety, more than general welfare, not anticipating any impact.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a motion to accept these findings as presented?
Some move.
Jim? Second? Okay. Second is, um, let's take a roll call vote on that. Don't have Josh tonight.
It's not great.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
And Del Meyer not here, Jonathan Glassman.
Yes.
Kim Weeser.
Yes.
Larry Dawson.
Yes.
Josh Grant not here.
Okay. Looks like that's all we need for that. And well, does, does anybody have a motion to recommend that the Houston County Board approve a conditional use permit for this purpose?
Do we have a reading of the recommendations first?
Okay.
Planning, the planning commission must consider the criteria above, should the permit be granted, staff recommend requiring the following conditions, one, the permitting shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws, regulations, two, the county may enter onto the premises reasonably times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is complying with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances. Proposed motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a dwelling of agricultural.
I'll make a motion to approve that conditional use permit.
Okay, ready?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Um, with those recommendations.
Okay, right.
Perfect.
Okay. Um, all those in favors?
Roll call.
Let's do that.
Yep. Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Del Meyer not here, Jonathan Glassman.
Yes.
Kim Weeser.
Yes.
Larry Dawson.
Yes.
Josh Grant not here.
Okay, sounds like all in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck too.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Mind the things.
He's running out of money, we're running out of two minutes.
Even the phone, few of mine. Misreadings, skipping ahead. Okay.
You guys might as well come up here and talk, relax.
Thank you. Good, good.
All right, welcome.
Well, yeah.
Say your name.
Yep, I'm Tyler Ladston.
And I'm Jerry Ladston, his uncle.
Wonderful. Hey, what can you, wanna speak to this, or do you wanna, yeah, go ahead and read the first point.
Oh, you gotta spend thirty seconds.
Couldn't take a break, there you go.
Drink water?
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that an application has been made by Joe Ladston, Tyler Ladston, twenty-one, six ninety-one, county branch, township, Minnesota, five five nine seven four, for a conditional use permit to have a dwelling in the neighborhood of the district. Section fourteen, fourteen, three, conditional use of subdivision one, subsection ten, spring road township on the following premises, two way. The northern half of northwest quarter to northeast quarter to southeast quarter, northwest quarter. Section forty-one, township one oh one, range seven, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel thirteen, zero two seven three, zero zero zero. Said applicants are standing and making application as key owner of the owner. Hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioned Room, City of Calabonia, Minnesota, at five twenty PM on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Calabonia, Minnesota, five five nine two one, or email at martin@harrett.co.houston.mn.us. Must be received by Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Comments in regard to petition received by the state is provided in public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Harretson Administration.
Okay, now we'll ask for your information, anything you'd like to add?
Um, it's just a nice piece of land for Tyler to build on. Road already down to it, he uses the shed as a caffeine barn and raising, raising a couple stairs every year there, so it's just be nice to have them down there and, you know, and get a nice little house. Perfect, perfect little spot where the road is already there.
All right.
Get my wife and kids out the country, they can kind of like the same thing other couple are here for, you know, just grow them up right. Yeah, everything easement is from the top Township Road. And Marty out there, and Amelia out there. Yeah, trying to make sure everything was good there for the grade and everything's out of floodplain and
Okay.
Benchmark reset and everything, the floor height, so keep everything legit.
Okay.
You guys have a sewer there, right?
Yep, sewer guy was there, they done their soil samples, everything's a goal.
Wells there too, right?
Wells there's, wells there too, yep, existing well.
Is that a separate forty?
It is, yep.
I'm looking at the certificate of survey, I'm looking, I'm assuming it's a section that's thirteen point three six acres.
You got it.
Okay, Marty, I see there's two buildings there, are they included in that?
Yep.
Is there a setback problem for those? Okay.
Yep, there's barn, pool shed, and then the well's right behind it. That's all included with this thirteen.
Right.
Anything else from the commission?
Any, anybody complaining or anybody?
Public comments, do we have any public comments now?
I talked pretty much all the landowners around, and we're up to date with everybody, and everybody aiming the green light that way, so.
Okay, township, did you hear back from township?
I called him and he said, you want me to call over early to get stuff rolling for you, we're all good.
Mike?
Uh, was it, yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Okay, nothing else from public or no comments you said were received? On what I've been, okay.
So this is kind of like a little building site.
Yeah, used to be a house down there years and years and years ago. Kind of want to call it home, you know?
It's not there anymore, right?
Nope, nope.
Actually, there was not a written, somebody stopped in.
Uh, Richard Storyly.
Richard Storyly stopped in and asked. Put the poles into another neighborhood.
Okay.
They just, you know, I know this is going, I know this.
They're, yeah, they're not very clear.
He just wanted, yeah, he just wants to know.
It's solid.
Okay.
You called me in and I told him to call you.
Oh, good. Okay, if there's nothing else to discuss, preview here, do we have a, a motion to bypass somebody?
Some big motion to bypass, line, I think it is, and twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Okay, probably fifteen.
Probably fifteen in.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, Jonathan? Greg and Jonathan, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on with the, the findings.
Number one, the proposed use can force the county land use, staff analysis, single-family, non-farm dwellings are conditionally allowed in agricultural districts. This protects agricultural interests, which is a primary goal of comprehensive land use.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two.
That the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use, the applicant indicates dwelling is a single-family, non-farm dwelling. Housing is a needed use.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, three.
That proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county staff analysis, the new dwelling, proper erosion control and septic treatment, but minimal impact on the local water.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four.
That the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Measures such as the erosion control plan will be in place for the construction of the new dwelling to minimize the water.
Okay, it sounds like we've already talked about this planning.
Yeah.
About, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five.
That soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Soil conditions will not be a concern, adequate for the proposed use.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six.
That potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been met. Staff analysis, there are no anticipated pollution hazards.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying aye. Number seven, please.
That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided, staff analysis. The owner will be responsible for all utilities on the parcel as it is a new site. The driveway will be connected to an existing driveway using these.
Okay, once again, that's been discussed, it's on.
Yep.
Okay, all righty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to ten.
That the conditional use will not injurious the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted, staff analysis. New dwelling will have a low profile new shed with existing structure down the closest neighbor located eight hundred and twenty feet away, which is also family members. The addition of dwellings is not anticipated to negatively affect the use of neighboring properties.
Okay, it was exactly eight hundred and twenty in the previous.
I was gonna say that. Hospital family.
So I'm just asking, okay, we got it, all right. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Same.
Yeah.
Just making sure, sometimes it could be a fatal, how about eleven?
That the establishment of a conditional use will not impede normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the predominant land use is agriculture and continuation of which will be minimally impacted by the new dwelling, the area continues to be primary agricultural. The dwelling should not impact neighboring landowners' ability to utilize their properties for existing uses.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to fifteen, please.
That the site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare, staff analysis, public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, not anticipating.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, we have a motion to accept the findings as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, take a roll call vote on that one.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Del Meyer not here, Jonathan Glassman.
Yes.
Kim Weeser.
Yes.
Larry Dawson. Chris, Josh Grant not here.
Motion carries, thank you. Mission clear.
Any recommendations that we need to?
Yeah.
Number one, the permitting shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. Number two, the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is complying with conditions and all other applicable statute rules.
Okay, anything else to add?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a dwelling in the area, section district, with the two conditions.
Okay, we have a second.
Yes.
Great, roll call vote on that, please.
Greg Myrie, yes.
Cindy Wright. Yes.
Del Meyer not here, Jonathan Glassman.
Yes.
Kim Weeser.
Yes.
Larry Dawson.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Motion two.
Thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, the commission will be August sixth. It's gonna be the.
Review.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, we're ed, we're winging, we're not feeling the air.
Look at all, you're so bored, she missed it.
I don't have right now.
Yeah, she can, she can actually hear and pay attention, yep, yep. They don't have to filter. Her spleen. Oh my goodness.
I was gonna talk for you guys, there's a in the one day workshop, um, on the music. And I think Jimmy's done those before.
Yes.
This year they're not doing one in Nikado, it's only just a day club, so I don't know if anybody's interested in that, but I've been sitting here, it's August twenty-ninth, which I think is the third day, probably their fourth or third day, so we appear here. But if anybody's interested.
Can you send some information on that?
Yeah.
Do you have, what you have, yeah, that'd be great. Please, do you have what you have, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, your email. Be fine for me, I don't know about everybody else. Thank you, that's great, great to know. Keep up on some of these.
Yeah, I guess what I passed on was. Latest version of the. Proposed draft language for the the canvas.
Right.
It gets kind of interesting. It takes some coordination because. Caladonia and the rest are interested in doing the law.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's it's kind of. How who, how is it delegated, how do they coordinate? This is also a statewide. He's been looking at surveys and asking, how are the people going about this, and it's, there's. A number, some people are like, I don't want to deal with it, some people are doing it for a while, I'll think about it later.
You mean from the county or?
From from different.
Or shit, okay.
Yeah, and so where I'm wrong with this is that it's still a little bit up in the air, this idea of the verbiage, I'll give you that, but it seems like we're angling towards. Basically some language that will give the opportunity for certain municipalities to do their own within a certain limit. And they'll have to use the fact that they have zoning to create areas or whatever, where they're in the original situation. And. That's the way it's kind of aimed, the other things that we're looking at with the rule are setback distances, the different things. And should they be different for like, say it's hybrid business district? Or it's different distance, where that gets kind of nuance to be is by the time you start putting them all together. My head, what's especially almost no space, because the the distances gets gets so, you know, big as far as that goes, so it's kind of. You know, uh, there there's still some some debate on that, that's for the most part what the rule is. The rule is not going to be to the level that some other counties have certainly done. The other counties are starting to starting to realize that they put together this big giant rule and they're not sure. But they can be answers.
Mm-hmm.
With all the inspections and all the requirements and all the things that are going along with it. And but in in this case, it's basically. There'll be certain elements that relate to zoning and and things like that, there'll be requirements for lighting, uh, air pollution control and maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for some of the equipment that goes along with it. Um, you know, one of the areas that that gets kind of interesting is if there were growers. And they were out in a rural area or something like that, um, there's there's still some discussion going on with that, but. The main thing is Sam wanted us to present this to you and say, it's in the works, this is where this is where we're working at so far. That's not to say it couldn't change, it could get more strict, it could be more lenient, it's exactly the same. So it is still up in the air, but it's aiming that way, and a lot of the procedural stuff will notch. So what you're seeing in that tax, probably eighty-five percent of that is definitely fixed. But in terms of like the possible setbacks, or any some of the 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 negotiation or the. Cooperation between municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
And the county, there may be some. So it's not too far off.
What is the start date for that?
Oh, it's probably gonna be in twenty point five, I mean, you know.
January one.
Which is months away.
It's not too far away.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's bring it to the board of commissioners and that.
Okay. So this that you handed out, the highlighted changes, are those the current changes, is that right, or what are we looking at?
Those were just things that the county attorney and county related for.
Okay.
That's why I was bringing up the idea.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
In Caladonia Spring Grove, they have their.
Oh, they do.
I wish I had a present, you know.
Crescent's starting to work on some stuff.
They're starting to work on the awesome living. But we gotta deal with the city ordinances, and then we gotta try to make one for the county that's gonna work for everybody.
So I'm curious, because they need to align um, between the cities and the townships or the county. Um, are we working together on that with, or is the county working with the cities?
We've had some early discussions.
Okay.
And they, the Caladonia's kind of like, this is the way we're going. We're not sure what we're.
Okay.
Spring Grove on the same pattern.
Okay.
And like, so. There've been some very.
Okay, but that's good, because if you can, you know, line it up step by step prior to putting it down.
Certain work. It's just. Where it gets interesting is that state gives. County authority to do so. And then if somebody does the. They can line up with the county, but it's like, okay, so how does that all play in? And that's sort of where I was getting at, is that we we spent a fair amount of time looking at all of other counties doing, how are they doing?
Yeah.
And so far, there isn't been this one that's just amazing, that everybody has smiled. You know, so it's so it's like, not only should.
Well, unfortunately, they're not really gonna know what's working and what's not until once it gets.
Then there's.
Yeah.
We're we're just thinking of legality. And you know, does this pass the test of being legitimate?
Mm-hmm.
Have you looked at the rules that Caladonia and Spring Grove put out, are they compatible?
We we've seen what Caladonia is somewhere in the direction. And. I'm not sure.
Okay.
And how about enforcement of this?
Great question.
That is a big deal.
Uh, yeah, in terms of. Boy, uh, you know, I mean. Zoning isn't to that level of a regulatory entity. Um.
It's gonna be pretty much like the compliance checks they have around law, and you go into those same shops for, that's what I know of, it's a now what they're gonna do.
Okay.
But they might change, like you say.
Well, and the other thing that there's potential for. You do get a little bit of the regulatory, that if something comes in and wants to do something.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just like, well, you can do this and you can do that. Which is how you address non-conformities.
Right.
In so. And so that's not quite to the same level of.
Mm-hmm.
What they they have stuff, there certainly is. I know.
Okay.
And we say twelve thousand people per shop.
Uh-huh.
So, according to the rules, we could have one and a half shops in Houston County.
One and a half.
Yeah, in the county, but uh, we already got three in Caladonia selling and stuff.
Yes.
How many in the Crescent, so?
Yes.
That's how how we're gonna fluctuate that, and how we're gonna regulate that's gonna be the problem.
Yes.
Still firm all the whole thing.
Lot of open air, a lot of gray areas, yeah.
Correct, and then I would also look at, you know, the enforcement end of it as far as legalities, officials, the um. That's police, city police versus county and highway patrol. Everybody, you know, that has to deal with.
I think it's something the lowest company you have money, and that's probably the issue.
Okay.
Now, when it comes to the growers, who's gonna issue the license to the people that are growing it?
I think that's gonna come through the state.
Cause I seen an article on K T T C News one night, where this lady was on her, she's part of this. Organization, she said, we're gonna make sure. That the people who have been arrested for marijuana. Unlawfully, she said, are gonna be the first ones to be issued the permits to grow.
There's some discussion about. I don't know what the right term is, there is some language to that effect in the rule. And there's a system, and it's mainly in twin cities for designated areas that had that type of activity, there there is an element to be actually.
Which seems kind of weird, because at that time, it was illegal. To do that, now they changing the rules, you know, and they're gonna have the first opportunity to get a license.
One of their first, but they, they're definitely priorities.
Yes.
Well, every household gets to raise eight plants, so that's gonna, I mean, if you raise eight plants of marijuana, you're smoking a lot of marijuana. You get eight plants sucked up in a year, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good place to stop. Yep. Sorry, page nine, you said the cultivation hemp manufacturer, all that?
Yeah.
All those listed, okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah, that sounds. Interesting, okay, anything else? So, that one, okay, let's move forward with um, our hearing number. Oh, my good time for worms. Thank you for joining us tonight, um, Marty, you wanna go through this? Why don't you introduce yourselves first for the record, so we don't forget?
I'm Brent Algodol, I am gonna be the contractor on the project if everything goes forward.
Okay.
I'm Nathan Worm, the landowner, if it goes forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Welcome. You go ahead.
If notice of public interest, please take notice that an application has been made by Algodol and me. Builders LLC on behalf of Nathan and Jennifer Warren, twelve, seven, five, nine, full of drive, Caladonia, Minnesota, five, five, nine, two, one, for additional use for that for accessory dwelling. In a residential district, section twenty-nine to twenty-nine fourteen subdivision, one, four, subsection. For subdivision and section fifteen to fifteen three subdivision one. Subsection eleven, from Caladonia Township on the following access to a green acres, third edition lot, seven and twelve, block one, section twenty-four, township one and two. Green six, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel zero, three, zero, four, six, five, zero, zero, zero. Said applicant standing and making application, this fee owner said described brands, appearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Division of the City of Caladonia, Minnesota at five forty P M on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunities and comments relative to the granting or denying this said applicant application comment, should be mailed to the environmental services department. Your force off Marshall Street, Caladonia, Minnesota, five, five, nine, two, one, or email to mark that area at Houston, that. And then that U S must be received by Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Comments in regard to petition received by this state will be part of the public record, will be made available for review by the planning commission for Eric to the meeting. Houston County planning commission by Matt Eric's on the administrative.
Okay, great, what would you like to add, if you like to?
Um, I don't want to elaborate too much, we're just looking to look into building accessory building, um, that will match and blend in very nicely with the principal building on the property. Um, as you can see in your notes, it's got a gymnasium in it, you know, he's looking to keep the. Neighborhood kids active off their phones and iPads, and um, it's hard for these kids sometimes to get into an open gym and. Get uptown for that, cause they're always busy with the the older kids and stuff, so.
So this is personal use only, neighborhood friends rather than commercial?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
On that's, I mean, until you guys start firing questions, I guess, that's basically the the gist of what we're looking to do.
This is going out here where you live?
Correct, yes, right, yep.
And you're putting a septic tank in?
Holding tank is what.
They don't have septic going, but I guess.
No, they have septic for houses and stuff, but it's just, you know, not much there, and it's not gonna be a.
Probably a lot less just to put a tank.
It does, and it's not like it's gonna be used that much for the bathroom and everything like that, it's not not a residence, there's no bedrooms or anything like that, yep.
So is it actually a double lot?
It, she um, bought the other lot, and now it's zoned as one lot.
It is.
It's one point five eight acres, yes.
And it looks like one of the, one of the stipulations is that the elevation is going to be um, eight feet higher. Than the other.
Aid was aggressive, we just wanted to cover it, um, when I did all the measuring, it's four to five feet higher than the principal building, just at the top. Um. The height from the ground is the same as your regular walkout basements. Um, because the walls are eighteen feet, and usually a walkout basement, you have nineteen feet to your eve overhang.
Okay.
This is eighteen foot, um, so it's really no different than a walkout basement height. It's just, it's longer in essence than a lot of them, but it's. Standard with many houses that are on Katrina Drive, if you drive on Green Acres Drive, if you look at the houses on Katrina Drive. Those are eighteen feet high for seventy feet long, I mean, a lot of them are, because that's their whole walkout back there. Yeah.
To take a drive back.
Okay, yes, yep.
So in your home, your current home is a walkout, right?
Front and back, yes.
Oh, yeah.
No, back does not have a, it's patio, but not a walkout basement, yes, yep.
Okay, in this, okay, so and you've also included the covenants in here, in your.
Neighbors all okay with it?
I haven't heard any, they're all for it, I mean, we all have young kids and they're.
Their concern was to service water.
Yep.
Dave, Dave Wolf, they go out and look at it? And I haven't heard back from them. But, so.
Yep.
I don't know if they're looking to, I don't.
And I mean, like. It's really just the same as another house out there, yep.
If he didn't own both lots, there'd be a house.
There would be, yes, yep, I mean, it's the same distance between property lines, we got the same amount for water to come off. We can run the gutters opposite ways to get it to, you know, spread as evenly as we can off of both sides, you know, just like you would on any standard house. Yep.
Okay. So, um, Marty, you mentioned, um. Hopefully, Dave was out there, you did get feedback from.
I did not, we we, we did not get that.
Okay, you did get feedback from. The township, yeah.
Wrapped up. Situation. I think we're gonna get that.
Hmm. So, um, but the township had commented, and I'm curious, because the uh, the comments from the township did state that there was other people that were concerned, I don't know what that subjectively means. You know?
What else?
Hmm, what about your neighbors, have you heard?
They're all fine.
Okay.
Yep.
I did talk to three neighbors, two were in favor, one was not, but he wanted to remain confidential. Um. I don't know where he got the information, he said something about a bar being in in the facility.
There possibly will be one, it's a long term, if he finishes the other part completely off. But it's not like it's gonna be a stocked bar, you know, that'll be for.
He was.
It'll be for personal, if he ever has a few people over, it's not gonna be sitting there for.
People have bars in your.
Yeah, exactly, it's no different than me going to work for eight hours and my.
Right.
Fourteen and twelve year old having friends over, I mean, I don't expect them to. Yep.
But he wanted to remain confidential. Um. And uh, and.
It looks like it's gonna be a daycare.
Yeah, and as they mentioned in the beginning, you know, if it's going to be for personal use or neighborhood kids or something like that, um. It's a little different than commercial, because a lot of times people do jump to, well, if you're gonna open a bar, you know, in your in your yard, that would be.
O- one question I have with the height and that, are we? Getting ahead of ourselves with the planning instead of the variance board?
Right.
Looking at this?
And the method to the men's. First meeting. They wanted. To get, they had a very impressive pressing situation, so I'm like, okay. I can flip this. So normally you would do the variance first and stuff like that, so what what you can do here is is make a condition to basically say. Subject to the variance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Okay, I wanted to bring that up.
And solely because first people. At a very pressing meeting, and they were like, you know, she she asked me about three times, and I'm like, why we don't do this? And she's like, you know, can I do this, can I?
Oh, you're talking about what we were.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, what came down was that's why I flipped.
Yes.
Normally you do the board just.
Right, right.
Then you do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Even if.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah, even if we pass it, it's still up to the variance.
Yeah.
And the final decision then.
How far in variance do they want?
Um, eight feet.
It says eight feet on there, but like I stated earlier, the building will only be probably four feet higher to the peak than his principal building. Yep.
Well, this is pretty high, very high basketball.
Yeah, but like I stated, it's no higher than a regular house out there, it's just where his. Floor starts, that is, his floor is higher than his elevation of his. House right now, so that puts the peak higher.
I've seen bigger houses.
Oh, yeah, uh, there's one right at the end of the road, almost is about thirty-five, forty feet in the air.
There won't be any commercial. No. Pretty solid.
Pretty solid in terms of.
When Nate comes home, where he shuts it down is down.
So it, not that we, you know, enforce the restrictive covenants or all of that, but there was comments in here about signage. You know, so once again, or bright lights or, you know, the lighting.
There won't be any, you know, cuz it's not a public facility, it's just for personal use, there will no be exit signs or nothing like that, or, no.
In your painting.
And that front park will probably be like an office or what is that?
He's thinking about just sitting area, if that's where the bathroom is, you know, yep. He might put a golf simulator in there, you know, another thing for kids to work on and everything, yep.
So there isn't a charge for you to always put to them?
Kindness of his heart.
Keep the kids off the street.
Off their phones and iPads.
Yeah, they gotta be entertained, it's the best way.
And is this, um, it looked like it, I mean, that would be a pretty big footprint on your person there too, so. It's gonna be a speeding rate out back.
That is, it's not a complete square like it says there, the first part is thirty-four by thirty, um, so it juts in nine feet on both sides. Um, then that's the part we'll try to get the water to runoff between his house and the new building and then take the rest of it to the other side. Um, so it's not five thousand square feet, it's closer to forty-five hundred. That first building is not thirty by fifty, it's thirty by thirty-two or thirty-two by thirty-two.
Well, if it's tall, it makes it appear larger.
It does, yep.
Um, okay, so public comment, nothing else, was public?
Just the one is from the township.
I got a couple of issues, I'm, you know, when I first looked at this, I thought it looked like a good idea, and then I got the thinking, what does the ordinance say? And I, the zoning ordinance has the term customarily incidental, well, I got the thing, what's customarily incidental mean? So I looked it up and it said to be customary, the use or structure must be commonly or habitually found in connection with the principal use or structure. Now, this is certainly not common, so that was one thing I found. Another thing I found out, you know, under accessory buildings and structures, now this is not. A gymnasium, but it states no private garage used or intended for the storage of passenger automobiles. Shall exceed fifteen hundred square feet of gross area. Now, so they're limiting their billing to fifteen hundred square feet for a garage and. You know, what's the intent of the zoning ordinance? Do they want to allow, you know, a building of forty-five hundred or five thousand square feet? I mean, looking at the zoning ordinance, we're kinda stepping outside the bounds, so I guess I'd like some feedback. What other people think, and, you know, again, I said, originally I thought this looked like a good idea, but I just got to thinking. These couple of points, I'd like to bring them up and have some discussion on those, and see what you think.
One thing I, you know, I always have a concern about is setting precedent. So when you're talking about fifteen hundred square feet now, you know, so the next person within that area, within the township. Um, request something very similar could be for a different purpose. Then what? You know, so I, I do, I do agree, Jim, I think there's some things that, you know, we need to consider. In addition to what you're actually asked.
My, the word you just used was precedent, we're setting a precedent here, so, um, I think we need to be careful in what we're doing.
Well, you gotta look at two, it's not a business, it's just a personal property, you know, it's his home place, you know, so. Traffic wise, I don't see where that's gonna be a big problem and, uh. I mean, we are trying to keep the kids off the street and that's a huge thing.
Sure.
And, I mean, there's pole sheds out in the country twice as big, three stall barns. You know, you drive around the township, Brad King's got one similar thing that he wants to build out there. I mean, they're all over already, so I don't know why we'd wanna stop this one now. I mean, they're.
Even though this isn't a residential district.
Well, you got a lot of places out there like Brad King's, his is the residential area.
And for the use of.
To live, to build on.
But, I mean, what does he use it for?
He lives there and he has a business there too.
Okay. Um, my thought is just that if it, if it isn't, you know, if it isn't a basketball, um, area, wh- what else is it going to be for? Is it a storage, is it gonna be something else?
I mean, hopefully it stays this way for many, many, many years, is the, I mean, I guess, that's the goal. Is to be able to have kids for a long time, be able to come in there, you know, people that move into the neighborhood, hopefully. You know, or people, anybody that is there, or if people have company over in the neighborhood, you know, some of their kids can come over too, it's just. Yeah, I don't think he thought about any, you know, storing boats, he doesn't have boats or anything like that, you know, it's, we're not even. It doesn't even have an overhead door in it, you know, so it's not like we have a big overhead door in the front where we're planning on putting. Equipment or any type of cars or collectibles in there.
So, you know, my point is just that if it, you know, our, our conditional use is for the, the structure. And where it's at, and, you know, if what's in it is a part of that, if it's recreational. Use for storage or business or something like that, we would consider that as well. So what else? Anybody else have any other comments?
Well, it don't look like it's gonna be used for storage if they're not putting an old door in it, I mean, you're just having a walk-in door.
Walk-in door on the backside and one coming in from the finished area down into it, yep.
You don't see traffic become an issue with, let's say there's half a dozen cars in the driveway on a regular basis.
I don't foresee that being an issue at all, I mean, most of the kids are all right there, I mean, they all walk right there, I mean, they'd ride their bike there, yep.
And you got some open lots there too, so they can, I mean, it's a good spot.
Yeah, they won't, I mean. There will not be extra vehicles there, I mean, they're just, if somebody does, you know. On the Green Acres drop their kid off, I'm sure they'll just drop them off and say, I'll pick you up in an hour, you know, call me when you're done, yes.
Okay, anything left?
This gonna be a stud frame building or post frame?
Stud frames, yep, LSL, good timber strand studs for, you know, strength and everything, yep.
Looks like you're trying to blend it in with the housing in the area.
It's the site, same material as his house has on it, same color, same shingles, you know, it's got to be. Materials have to match his principal building.
Anybody else have any comments right now? Anything else you wanna add right now before we go into the sects of the findings and all of them? Let's, let's look at, I'm eliminating bypassing with you.
I'll make a motion now, we eliminate nine. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Okay. We're gonna motion here, you made motion, or second?
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And the opposed, mostly carries, okay, now let's move on, thank you.
Extend, since we instructed that conditionally allowed in the resident, this is a defense, every vote of interest, which is a primary goal.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, too.
That the applicant demonstrates a need to propose use. That for any case of such use of recreational, it's more of a primitive law. Housing and associated activity on the.
Okay, we've accepted this, um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three.
That the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county staff now, to be dwelling with proper erosion control and septic treatment, allow minimal impact.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four.
That the proposed use will not adversely increase the quality of water runoff. Staff analysis, many of such as erosion program will be in effect, definitely, definitely minimize the water.
Okay, so four and five, um, you did not really get feedback, you said, um, Dave on this, or? Okay, so, um.
There, there's water and sewer up the streets out there.
No, no curb and gutter there, no, no, no.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five.
The set of conditions are adequate to the. The set of conditions will not be a concern and are adequate.
Okay, something, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six.
The potential pollution hazards have been addressed in this. Staff analysis, there are no anticipated pollution hazards.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven.
An adequate utilities access road drainage and other necessary systems have been or aren't being provided. The owner will be responsible for all utilities on the rest of the driveway connecting the fellow drive.
Okay, and this was a separate direct, except other than your house, right?
Nope, there would be, probably be used as the same.
Okay.
Yep. One drive, just one driveway to maybe for another one, yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Number ten.
That the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes to re-inferment. Accessory structure will not be injurious to others in the area, the addition of accessory structure does not anticipate to negatively affect use of neighboring properties.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eleven.
That the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal development, improvement of surrounding vacant property for the value of uses in the area. Staff analysis, the land use is relevant and the continuation of which will be minimal, minimal impact provided by the new structure. The structure should not impact neighboring landowners ability to utilize their property for accessible uses.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number fifteen.
That site specific conditions and other, and such other conditions are established as required for the effective of the public's health safety laws and general well. Staff analysis, public health safety more than general, and not anticipated impact.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a motion to accept the findings as presented.
So move.
Greg?
Second.
Jim? Second, um, let's take a roll call vote from there.
Grant Myrie?
Yes.
Cindy, right?
Yes.
You don't learn out here, Jonathan, yes, and Weezer, yes, there you go, sir.
Uh, yes.
Dash Brandon, not here.
Okay, motion carried. All right, now, um. We need discussion, we, we have a motion to move this forward or not.
Anything about the recommendations, they all okay?
Yes, please.
Number one, the permit shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations, number two, the county may enter on the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner. To ensure the permit holders compliant with conditions and all of the statute rules of ordinance. Number three, the permit shall complete an erosion control plan including surface water.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend that we look at conditional use for men.
Okay, and this.
Those recommendation.
And is this any dependent on, um, board of adjustment?
Yep, we'll have to go, it's, I mean, okay with us, but I go through the board of justice.
Mm-hmm, cause that is to come. Um, I'd also just like to comment, um, within that motion that, um, you know, we need to look at all the requests. Um, like this that come in the future individually. And look at all those points, you know, that they're bringing forward, so this is not setting a precedence necessarily. Sorry. And we have a second?
Sorry.
And it's jumping. Any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call on that, motion, the second.
Frank Myrie?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We don't want to hear Jonathan, yes, and Weezer, yes, there you go, Stan, Dash Brandon.
Okay, motion, so we need to use the county review, um.
We'll save it, yeah.
All this, yeah. They review.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, we can bring it up, long way to Anthony, and we talked about.
Hope we can, we can, thank you. We're good, we filled that.
We stay, we got the variance one.
Yeah, 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 it's over.
Or is there one before us?
Uh, yeah, yeah, let's, um, talk about just one thing that I wanted to bring, actually, it's true. But I wanted to bring up, Larry is, you know, observing, is a fairly new, is a fairly new, um, mission member here. And he, he and I were talking and he brought up a couple of good slants that we were discussing. One thing is to, um, make sure that we, you know, we kind of, uh, assume that people are going to the sites. That we have before us individually and, or at least, you know, having an idea of what is proposed and actually typically going to the site. He also mentioned that in some circumstances, at least, or maybe every circumstance. When you're thinking of, um, we could go as a group to view that site, similarly, we've done that, um, in the dairy farm, yeah, yeah.
If you go all together, that's considered a meeting, so we can't.
That's, that's one thing, so we would not be able to have discussion. Um, so, you know, I guess there, i- if we can have a way of making sure that, um, at least, you know, the majority of us have checked on that location.
That's what I was thinking, in order to give the applicant. Fairness and us fairness, as many of us can go to the place, ask questions, get. Information about it, no decisions are made, just get information about it, then the decision is made here at the hearing. I think it's only fair to us and the applicant to ask our questions or everybody hears. We might have a different question, they might not think about it up here, or we might think about down here, but I can mean that, so we gotta post it. Which is.
There's some procedures here.
Yeah.
I know what the township is, if we do it, we gotta post, I think, three days ahead of time, townships are different than counties.
Um, and then the other consideration is you guys are on site, you go to the site and review these to, um, look at, look at what we're talking about, correct? So you're bringing us that information and we count on you to do that. So, I'm just saying it's, you know, we, we wanna make sure that, uh, we do not look at these things blindly.
Right, I mean, if. A person went along with you or two or three, that'd be considered, that would not be considered a quorum, would it have to be posted then?
Yeah, I think it, and then it's not.
Could contact any of us who could possibly go along, right, I mean, you know, watch your, right, yes.
If, if, or who's ever available or who lives in that area or, you know, some connection, um, and maybe we could just communicate that, um.
Well, I mean, you got Martin and Amelia, they're looking at stuff all over.
Yeah.
And if they think there's a problem, they can call Cindy and say, talk to the board members and go and look at this on your own time and see what you. I mean, that's what we think we should be doing, cuz she don't have time to be running out, either does Martin.
Yeah.
And we're short helping the office already, so I think for right now, I think if they, if they think there's gonna be a problem, they contact you. And then we can all individually go out there and then we don't have to worry about having a meeting. Turn in your money, in your time and go from there.
One thing that potentially could be done is if you know something's really gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
You could, you could tell the applicant right up front to say, the odds are we're gonna put a sixty day extension.
And then we're gonna go through the.
Yeah.
Try and process it through.
Yeah, and, and I have yet to, if, you know, in my short-term experience on this commission, have been at, um, a meeting or discussing one of these issues. That board members have not been on site or viewed it, you know, we often do that, so, but I. Making it, oh, well, you really have to, because it's, you know, what's on paper and one dimensional is very different than going out and seeing the lay and. The land when somebody has a question.
You know, if the township, you know, if the township says they don't like it, then we have a good reason to go out and look at it, you know?
And that's a second point.
Yes.
Good segue into that, Greg, there he goes, no. Before we can, yep.
So one of my concerns with doing site visits has been brought up.
So one of my concerns with doing site visits has been brought up. Very legal review that comes with the thing, then you're on a site, we don't have a good. Uh, method of reporting, and so we don't get that documentation, and so that's where. And we need to keep down like, I don't touch that and think like that, and so that's the only concern with site visits, we don't. Create that great record that we get, hopefully, and.
Um, and we could. Kind of commit to doing that individually, if we're seeing it, you know, if I'm standing out there and looking at, um, the site, I need to. Give you my notes for discuss that, and I, I do like the idea of if there's an issue. Then, you know, then it's, we pay it deeper attention to that. Because some of these are pretty routine, you know, too. Um.
There is a little remedy to this, uh, mentioned to Cindy. About, we used to have it where the applicant came to the township first. With the application. Only at our township meeting, which is once a month. We reviewed it, we asked our questions. So. In the aspect, our questions would be answered. For the, for the county. Um, any concerns that we would have. Would be noted. Um. There's been three instances so far, I think our. Your notice goes to our clerk and she doesn't bring it. And it's a lack of correspondence, I mean. I'd like to see come back to the township first. I'm president of the Township Association, we've talked about it, and they're a hundred percent. With the idea of going to the townships first. I don't know if we have to adopt a resolution to bring it to the county. Um, I talked to Eric Johnson about it and. He read it, answered. He said, bring it forth before the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see it come back that way. To the township, we sign it, then they take it to the county.
First thing. Procedurally, can you? You know, maybe, maybe you certainly can't, that, that'd be the first question to ask is. Whether any instructions in the process.
Yeah.
As a result, I don't know. Situation at all, but that'd be the first thing to come.
I, I believe that we just need to improve some communication with that too, um, you know, we are asking applicants to contact the township. Contact that they have on that list, and, um, I actually had gone through just to see, to make sure that our list is accurate, we have a bunch of, um. We have, uh, contacts that are either chair, we have clerks, we have supervisors on that list. So, um, and whether or not they can get ahold of them via their phone number, you know, if that's. Right, or if they get back to them, or if they understand exactly what the plan is. Um, it, you know, it can kind of put them on the spot, so I do think if they have the, the packet of information of. Those pertinent areas, if it's in their township to discuss. Um, and then give us that feedback from the township. Um. It can kind of happen simultaneously, 'cause it is a, it's an issue with, um, timing. And getting public notices as well, right?
So that list, uh, the people that are on there have been given to us by each.
Yes.
Whoever they showed them the date.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And secondly, like, you can definitely require or ask people to come to your meetings, we, what we stated is. It's up to you guys how you handle it, how you communicate, you need to figure that out as a township. If you can review something or you have a concern, you need to let us know. And there are some townships that operate very well that way, um, and then other ones, I guess, we don't know where to hear from, so maybe. There's a breakdown in communication on that end, and nobody really is talking. But that's really up to you guys as a township, I think, if how you want to handle it.
Well, I still think it should come to the township first, that should be a step one. Um. We ask our questions. If they lied to us about what the use of it is. That's our fault. Because we know our township. Better. Than the county level. We know every location. Um, I've been in the township supervisor twenty-one years now, and we had an instance where a guy built the house without a permit. And it came before the county many years ago, um. It was built on an old cemetery site. The county didn't know it. But he built the house anyhow. Then they caught on to it and. The applicant said that I'd signed the permit. And I had not signed a per, he never even contacted us, and I said, no permits are signed unless they're at the meeting, so all three of us can review it. That way we get in our minutes. And that, and then, a little while later, he said. I guess you, I guess I should have came to you first. After the fact. And I still wouldn't sign it. Well, then. The zoning person at that time came to our meeting. And asked if we'd sign it, the house is already built, he's living in it. And we refused to sign it because of that historical. Cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
They actually pushed some old stones off the way. I mean, they're old, old, you know, wooden boxes and that, so they're. So, that's one reason that the town board really wants to get. Back into it first. For our minutes. And I think, like I said, if they lie to us. That's our problem. We can go back after them, um. Uh. I don't know, it's, uh. I think it's only fair. I don't think it'd make much more work. Um. Our situation is done. We wouldn't have to really attend a meeting then, if we have no questions about it. Um, if we have a question about, we can notify. The zoning office. With our. Questionable stuff.
You mean from the township?
From the township, yes, yes. So. So I don't know if you need something from the Township Association or what.
I think. And, and then, and that's what you're required to, you give it, okay? And then let us know that.
And, and I have contacted a number of township people I have asked tonight, you know. Uh, just to discuss if they, if I know you guys have not heard from them. Because I, I think there's a, you know, kind of a lapse there of, if you haven't heard anything, did they actually get it? Did they, did the clerk or the chair give it to?
Right.
Discuss it, we don't know that, um, so. You know, you're counting on getting that information, so maybe we can ask and make sure they. Give it to, give us information, give you information, one way or the other. And maybe they do have questions, and then they can come to the meeting because they have the, um, the actual packet that, of the pertinent request in their township. Right, because a lot of times, you know, that, that. Initial, um. Flyer that goes out to the neighbors and to the township board doesn't have a lot of information.
Right, really.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I've been out visiting townships the last two weeks because I'm out camping, so I've been getting a lot of. And. The, the whole thing here is gonna be communication, because Amelia contacts their secretary, treasurer, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that happens maybe on the second of June, okay, we'll just use this as a figure. Well, she puts it off to the side and all of a sudden, oh, our meeting's next week. Well, nobody knows nothing about it, I'm the supervisors. So I mean, we just need to get more communication and better communication here, because we could try to fix it, and I don't think there is a fix, I mean, it's like she said, she, she contacts. And the townships maybe should be invited to our planning commission.
Well, how about if we work on, not at this meeting, to resolve it tonight, but if we work on a communication plan, a better communication plan?
Maybe we gotta have the townships come to our meetings, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be.
It would be involved.
It's been very beneficial when we have.
Yeah.
Yes.
The question would be, Kim Dropper for nine. They send out this year. Information to the park, wherever the park is. Who's right to be contacted, contacted. And the fact that they did contact. And you would know the supervisor would have been contacted, get forth to the person, drag the wood. And throw it out.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, definitely.
You're saying send it to the clerk, whoever, and they send it back, tell them that they have notified.
I don't know, certify.
How, how about? We make it as simple, just send it to the three supervisors.
Well, the contact.
And the contact.
I think you should just contact the chairman. Be stationed.
That'd probably be simpler.
And that. And they have to be contacted ten to our voters after the hand meeting is in advance. So whoever is the designated individual gets a email. And there may be multiple. I believe all the township officers get the same notice like you guys do, the hard copies of it. And then they should, whoever is the designated individual should also be getting. So there's, there are three points at which township should know all this. By whenever they've done it, and that person that communicates it. I don't know what more we can do.
And it, and it certainly could be with the number of townships internal, you know, their internal, their clerk doesn't talk to the chair, chair doesn't, in time, you know, there's, could be many things that happen, people are. Vacation or something, or they don't get the message, it's just, you know, we're asking the applicants to check the box that says I have contacted my township. Um, and the follow-through, I think, is part of that communication, um, you know, on our part, just, just not have it one-way communication, that we send it out. To them and expect them to have received it and understand what's going on and approve of it. Um, even though maybe they have some questions, 'cause. They didn't receive any information or it wasn't discussed at the meeting, so I, I just think that we have some ways to go to improve that communication. It sounds like.
I agree, I mean, it's, most of it's communication.
Mm-hmm, and I'm, I'm perfectly willing, willing as your current chair to have, make sure that, you know, we get that input. Um, on here. And, uh, you know, that you guys send out and have that discussion or to invite them to the meeting. It's actually what I've been doing anyway. And I have trouble hearing back from some of them more if I don't see them, you know? And we go down the line, ask somebody else, I also have these, um, these sheets, if you guys want some copies, I, from the county, I can give you. Those copies of the names of the current list of township. Members.
I'll make a motion, did you?
Second.
Ooh, it kept them longer than.
Thanks, Cindy.
Any other discussion, I guess, we're. Slow on that.